Order at eight oh. We're called to order at eight oh one and let's begin with the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's my sticker.
Works very well.
Does.
Irene, would you take roll call, please?
Yes. Trustee Chen.
Present.
Trustee Do Mire.
Here.
Trustee Derry. Absent. Vice Chair Molno is excused. Chairperson Liz Hollingsworth.
Here.
Chair, we do not yet have a quorum. Oh, Lois Derry is here, though. Hang on. Now we do. Come on, come on. There she is.
Good morning, Lois. There she is. Good morning, Lois. Hello. Lois, can you unmute and say that you're here? I could read her lips. She's here. Irene, let's go ahead with posting the agenda and any public comments. Do you have any public comments for the trustees?
I do not have any public comments.
Let's go on into the first section, approval of the minutes of May 24th. Any comments on that? I have one. And I was a little surprised that I was supposed to invite the city manager to this meeting as I read the minutes last yesterday. So I listened to the tape again. And I think that I, it's page eight of 54, Irene. I did not communicate with the city manager because I don't think it was endorsed by the other trustees. And so where it says she will contact, can you change it to May or perhaps?
Yep, I'll do that right back.
Thank you. I move that the minutes of May 24th be approved with that one change. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes are approved with the edit. Board of trustees reports. I'll start with my chairman report. And I met with Irene and Michael on June 22nd to prepare for today's meeting. And I also reviewed meeting minutes to follow up on today. And I think at the appropriate agenda items, some review that we need to be sure we touch on. Dr. Molno asked at the last meeting if the city is eliminating or reforming the REC Commission. And Mr. Throne said he would find out and respond, so we look forward to hearing about that. Mayor Udi will give us an update on the Community Services Director search. And I hope to find out more about the honoring our outgoing board member and the timeline for bringing on new board member. And I just also wanted to say I love the photos in our packet of the, especially the Read Aloud Outdoors and the concert. It's great to be having onsite programming. And I love that you included it in the city manager's brief, Irene and Amanda. Thank you for doing that. Any other chair people have a report? Genevieve? She says no, she's shaking her head because this meeting is being recorded. Steve?
No, I had nothing.
Lois, do you have anything to report to us? Lois, I could read her lips and she said, I do not. Thank you. City Council Liaison Report, Mayor Udi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess there are two or three things going on that impact the library. First of all, with the, the, the additional board members, the replacement board members. Steve Taught and I still need to get together and discuss that, so I don't have a good answer on that one. On the recruitment for the new Community Services Director that is in process and there are some candidates there now. And I also wanted to, you know, share, you know, I believe for sure my view, but the view of the, of this group and of the structure, the community services function within the city. And I, I believe that the, that we will stop using the word Recreation Department. I believe it'll be Community Services because I think one of the, the goals here is to have a Community Services Director that's responsible for, you know, the facilities and the programming around the Remodeled San Marino Center, plus the library and the, you know, the combined programming that goes on between those. I think some of the programming will be, you know, within the library, some of the programming will be in the new San Marino Center. Some of the programming will be at Lacy Park and other, other facilities within the city. So I, I hope you'll support that as that evolves. And I, I know that part of the frustration with our prior Director of Community Services is a little bit of frustration in working with, with this group. So, you know, as we move forward, we're going to ask for some, you know, additional support for, for this. Because the library board has really, it has done a great job and really, you know, appreciate the, the support. But it's an advisory role within the, within the city and it's really not a fiduciary role overseeing the, overseeing the library.
Do you say that we're not a fiduciary role? I think I missed something there.
When I look at it, it is more of an advisory role that the authorities around people and budgets and programming really rely on city staff. And that this body, you know, helps provide feedback in set direction. But in terms of, you know, approve, the final approval and responsibility for, for people and budgets and programming, that lies within, within staff.
So what do you mean about people?
The ability to hire and fire people resides with, with, with staff.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. But I think, I think the ed code gives us responsibility to oversee and approve the budget.
If the education code is secondary to what city code is. And if you, and if you follow the, the breadcrumbs, the city code, you know, sets the authority for budgets and people with the, with the city manager and then to the city council. And I think even in, in your agenda packet, I think, Michael, you put it on page 40?
We have both the ordinance and the ed code sections in the packet this week.
Yeah, but if you look at your page 40 or 54, you know, kind of lays out what the org chart looks like in terms of the responsibilities and how that reports. So the, the, the programming around the recreation in the library, report to the Community Services Director and then the, the city's Community Services Director reports to the city manager and in a direct line.
Ken, I know I've been one of the outspoken people about this and the small but important issue of the Crow Public Library maintaining its identity and being identified on marketing and publicity materials. And you know that I've also been very supportive of REC in this kind of transition. I think part of the issue and part, we haven't gotten information. And we haven't gotten information about perhaps the, the vision of how these programs between the departments would be looked at. I've brought up a few times just the Smarter Living Series. I think that's a real natural one to start to look at. Where does it fit? Where does it fall? I also saw, and Michael, you were well quoted in the paper this week. And one of the things that you said was that it allows us to better use our resources between the two departments. And for myself and maybe other members of the board, I can support that. But I, I would like more information as time goes on. I'd like library trustees to be involved in some of that as we're molding and figuring out how this coordination exists, how to eliminate some of the overlap between the departments. And I'm all, all for that as long as the library maintains its identity. I think that's really important. And I think it's really important for fundraising at the level that the library hopes to do again.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. I think it's important for the Crow Public Library to remain its identity. And I think some of our stumbling blocks here, we, you know, haven't found the right leadership yet for the Community Services Director. Because when we get that right leadership in place and we get a plan on paper and the, the vision's clearly defined, I think everybody will know, you know, where this combined effort is going. And I'm hoping that there will be, you know, much better programming at a much, you know, more efficient, you know, cost and delivery system. But as you, it's going to rely on us, you know, we, we need to find the right Community Services Director to be our leader. And, and then when we find that person, you know, and, you know, we, we as a group need to support that person. So they, they are successful in what they're doing.
Lois?
I really resent that the library is under Community Services. I'm sorry. I'm sure it's best for the city or something, but it seems to me that our identity is really being lost. And in the article in the paper the other day, talking about the reopening of the library and stuff, was all about the Community Service Representative. Instead of I, Irene, we are the Crow Public Library. We're, we're not Community Service. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Lois. Genevieve or Steve, do you want to add anything? No? Steve's having breakfast.
Steve's having breakfast.
Sorry.
You know, and I, I don't think that the library loses its identity at, at all. I believe it's a, you know, it's a premier facility within, within the city. And I believe when we get the San Marino Center remodeled and really get this, this campus-like feel between the library and the San Marino Center, it's going to be a huge asset for the city.
Sorry, my only comment would be that, that it, it is kind of a delicate thing in terms of concept in people's minds. Mayor Udi, that you're saying that the Recreation Department kind of goes away. It's, it's difficult to try and make that transition when you have people for years have thought of the REC Department and the library is two separate entities. And now Community Services is this umbrella over both, but then you want Recreation to go away. So then it becomes, is it a Community Services thing and the Crow Public Library? You know, it's, 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 I understand from a managerial point how you, how you want to structure it. I am, I of course, I'm always approaching this from a marketing standpoint. And how are we going to make that clear in people's minds? So I, that's, I haven't got it figured out yet, but, but I'm, but I'm concerned.
It is a delicate situation for sure. I understand from the organization chart, meaning that we could eliminate possible overlap on expenditures and all that more than the city a little more efficiently. But how do we handle to maintain our library still being the brand and achieve cost-saving, what the city would like to see? I think we all wanted to be conservative when it comes to spending. So if there is overlapping, there's cost savings, certainly we would like to look into that option. But under the assumption that we will maintain library as its own brand. I think that's a very difficult task that need to be achieved, but certainly worth to explore.
Yeah, you know, I think it's less of cost savings and more, more efficient programming.
It seems like we're several steps away from that, aside from the renovation of the facilities in looking at how that would be achieved. You know, it, it concerns me too about looking at the org chart and the structure because one of the things that I do is look back at past minutes to make sure we're doing everything. And looking at the June 2019 minutes, we were meeting Cesar Monsalve as the interim director. So since that time, we've been going through interim directors, plus Michael, bless your heart, this is your second time as interim director. So that's five different people in this scope of two years. And that may be why this whole issue seems very murky to me. And I, perhaps what we're doing is also seeking some clarity and it's not there yet.
No, no, I mean, clearly we, we have lacked leadership. I mean, the, the Recreation Department or the Recreation Function has lacked leadership for six years or something. It's been, it's been forever, you know? So the pressure is to get the right director, Community Services in place so we can get the right, you know, plan in place to retain the identity and build the, the, build the library's image, but also deliver, you know, the, the programming that the community wants, whether it's indoor, outdoor, exercise, art, you know, you know, whatever, you know, the, the needs assessment says. So it's clearly a, a leadership challenge now. And I, and I don't think, well, you know, this is barely even a straw man right now. So this is not, you know, forcing anything, but we want to get the conversation going and make sure that as we move forward, we do it correctly and smartly.
Well, we look forward to being part of that conversation and, and part of the solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like to speak to anything else, Mayor?
No. Steve is going to, going to help us think about how to get some positive marketing around the remodeling of the San Marino Center. So we, what we're trying to do is get people excited for, for this remodel and what this Community Services Campus is going to be. So that then it might be easier to get some, some fundraising activities going around supporting this, this effort.
Thank you. We're going to table the Crane Art Gallery Liaison Report and go on to Marketing and Publicity Liaison Report. Steve?
I had the pleasure of meeting with Irene last week to discuss some issues. And of course, given the fact that there is no current Community Services Director, a little bit of the plans are on hold. Pardon me for moving forward. And we discussed the different methods of distribution that word is getting out about the library. What social media is being used, Facebook and, you know, emailings, Instagram, all that kind of stuff. And just as, as someone who wants to make sure we're hitting on, on all cylinders, I was trying to figure out where are we currently doing it and what areas of improvement are needed. And to that end, Gina just reached Brianna, who's, Brianna, sorry, who's, who's been doing a lot of this stuff. And Brianna's got a really good schedule in terms of sending messages out on an ongoing basis. She has a schedule of postings that she's doing via Hootsuite to let people know what, you know, she does Sunday, Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Just different things to let people know what things are upcoming. Monday is New Book Monday. Wednesday, they focus on young adult stuff. And Friday, there's a random program or Book Face Friday, which is a fun stunt that they were doing. So she seemed full of energy and a lot of good ideas and appreciated the, the insight that we could offer to try and move things forward and come up with the, with a, a strategic marketing plan as we move ahead and get something consistent. Moving, as we move forward. What else? Anything else, Irene? Did I skip on there that we chatted about?
That's very detailed. That was good.
Okay, good. Oh, and there's, and then we were talking about just doing a weekly email to keep everybody informed of what's going on. Because I think my takeaway is there is a lot of great work being done at the library by staffers and, and volunteers that is not getting recognized because they're really good at doing the work, but they're not focusing on telling other people about it. So I think that's what we want to be making sure that we all know what's going on. Because there, there's several initiatives that just sort of pop up that I happened to see on Facebook. Oh, but I didn't know about that in another way. So if you're not a Facebook user, you wouldn't know about it. And I think this group needs to, to know all the good work that they're doing. So we're going to make sure we focus on that. And that is my report.
Can I ask a question? Did you get this, these cards in the mail? Genevieve?
Yes, I did.
Please, Lois, did you get this card in the mail about the Fourth of July? First of all, Mayor and Michael, thank you for the Fourth of July. And Robert, I'm wondering, I, you know, maybe you could let us know at a future date what these postcards cost. And this might be, this was very attention-getting, maybe because I'm excited about the Fourth of July. But it might be something that we do closer to the opening of school to encourage the getting library cards, introduce story walk. We might be with our regular hours by then and just a real good news about the library mailing.
Robert, I can help out with that. Chair Hollingsworth, the, those mailings cost between $6,000 and $8,000.
Each?
Each, each time, yes.
Okay. And are they professionally designed? Is that sort of the cost as well? Okay, thank you very much. It might be worth it. Thank you. Let's go on to the Budget and CIP Liaison Report. And we did not have a formal meeting, but I was able to talk with Robert and how we're going to be tracking some of the donations going forward into the next budget year. And Robert just jumped on that. So thank you for that. Unless Genevieve has something to add. We don't really have a report. No, she's shaking her head. Let's go on and hear about the San Marino Center renovation.
We're back to me again. Fortunately, on, on this call, we've got two other people who are intimately involved in the project as well. We did meet last week and to discuss the interior and the landscaping. We had met before on that. I think last time we had our, the last meeting we had, we had not had either of our meetings, if I recall. So the landscaping plan is in place for the library. It's going to be beautiful. I asked questions about irrigation and to make sure that we're all being drought tolerant. And I'm, you know, very satisfied with, with the beauty of the landscaping plan and the, the water-wise use of it. And as always, I'm always concerned about ongoing maintenance because I like Michael Throne and I don't want him having to do extra work. So I, we asked questions about that and it's going to be a beautifully landscaped facility moving forward. So once the outside construction is done, that part's going to look really, really nice. And then as far as the interior goes, we have, we have one more gathering we're going to do. We're talking over the interior finishes, carpeting, we're in some places and what the floor is going to be like and curtains and all these other details. It's going to be a lovely facility. And I think it's been said before that this task force doesn't agree on everything, which is good. We've got a really good diverse opinions, but we have a real tendency to disagree politely and, and make progress towards things. And everyone gets a chance to have their opinion said and we resolve differences and everybody, I don't think anybody got exactly everything they dreamed of. But it's, you know, it's, it's all been very congenial to come up with a really, really top-notch facility. I think it's going to be useful for years to come. And, and it's been a good experience for me, as I've mentioned before, to, to hear these, these different opinions being presented and discussed. And I appreciate the expertise of all the people involved. You know, we've got two architects on the group and Al Bog is a flooring expert. So he knows all this stuff, throwing out these terms that I have to go back and look up and say, what does that really mean? VCT, okay. So it's, it's very helpful to, to know that we've got a lot of hardworking people involved in this and that the city has been very appreciative of our input and that the, the vendor is, the contractor has been very willing to listen to us and make the adjustments as, as needed. So I think we're, we're going to be meeting to have the, the final thing in terms of looking at larger paint samples and, and all that. But it's going to be a very clean, modern, very useful facility we're going to use for many, many years to come. Yeah, we're, we're waiting for an environmental impact report, correct, Michael? And I think that's, that's it. Yeah, in case anybody asks the library board, I don't think they will. But if there's a concern, the two big oaks in the front along Huntington are remaining. They're going to be cleaned up, of course, because after, you know, years of them hanging over, they'll be cleaned up. They're going to stay there. The other landscaping is going to look really nice. So I'm, I'm thrilled about that. And yeah, and then there's, there'll be signage, if you've seen the rendering that, that we've shown before, there's signage that shows the San Marino Center and the Crow Public Library. It's kind of a leash, no, this shaped sign like that. So with a tree in the middle, so that'll be nice. So people, as they approach the campus from the south side, will be able to know the library's on the right, San Marino Center's on the left.
If you look at Mayor Udi's screen, you can see that.
I knew he'd get out of the way. What a nice man.
He's using it as his background. And it's the only, the sign you're seeing is around that tree.
Yeah, yeah, the sign's right in front of the tree there. Can you, if you can see just to the left of that, right now, that's just a chunk of asphalt that leads to the, the handicap entrance, the back door. That's going to be a lovely little courtyard. So it's nice and great for community service activities. And you can see it's, it's going to be a very cohesive-looking campus, taking the same architectural details from the library, carrying it across there. So it'll look like, it'll look like two separate buildings, but one complex, which was the goal we thought we were, we were going for here. And it's what the community wanted. So it's going to be very nice. And way over in the left there, the trash cans will be hidden out of the way. So it's always an important part of design is to hide your trash, so.
Mayor, do you have Huntington Drive rendering? Oh, Michael has.
All right.
There it is.
There they are. Oh, they got two different ones there. Look at you guys. Okay. So you can see from the front on Michael's, you see that's the, the Huntington Drive entrance there. And you can see that, that's kind of what it'll look like. The pillars will be thickened and, and the appropriate roofing materials put in there. And then from the other side, your Mayor Udi's, you can see the, the, the Google Maps has caught the car going by at the right time. You see, those trees are representative of the oaks that are there. It's not, it's a rendering. It's not the right thing. But you see how that, that on the left side of the screen is the library and see how it just blends right in very nicely to the San Marino Center. So it'll be a harmonious-looking experience. People driving by will go, oh, look at that lovely city facility, rather than look at that nice new library and that other thing next to it.
Thank you. Steve, again, thank you so much for giving so much time and representing not, not just the library, but on behalf of the whole city. And it's going to be great for so many years to come. Thank you.
It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
Let's go on to the City Librarians Report. Irene?
Hello, everyone. You've got in your packet a pretty complete report, so I won't go through it step by step. But the big thing that's happened is that we reopened and that's been a tremendous success. We were worried about it. There's nothing bad has happened. People have come back, our old patrons, and they've taken their places, their old places around the library. It's like we never closed. I believe our circulation will rise and we've started in-person programming outside. And that's also been a success. We had a, a concert with two guys from the LA Philharmonic in, at seven o'clock in the evening as the sun set and the cool breezes blew in the patio. Come on. And then we've started Storytime again outside. And that's been a success, although how long we can do that in the heat, we don't know. If we didn't do it outside, we would do a virtual Storytime. And we did that once in the last few weeks. The Summer Reading Club has started, Reading Colors Your World, and I've got statistics on that in the packet. Storytime, all the pieces have arrived, so that's going to be installed here pretty quick. And that concludes my report. Does anybody have any questions?
How much did the foundation pledge to buy books?
They pledged enough for 108 books.
And were there any, like, specific genre, topic, strings attached? Okay.
We intend to spend it on children's materials because that's the budget that needs to help.
Thank you. Any questions for Irene? Thank you, Irene. Let's go on to the Management Analyst Report. Robert?
Good morning, everyone. Before I give my report, I quickly ran a report, Liz, to see the printing costs. So for the postcard, that cost $2,174. And that includes mailing, design, all of that. Our Community Services Guide fluctuates around $3,300 per issue. Going on then to my report. No major developments. Again, the library has maintained its conservative spending. Based on, however, passport revenue, of course, has jumped. Based on however, passport revenue of course has jumped and it's continuing to grow so long as the COVID restrictions are lifted. So as of right now, what I've been informed is appointments are both through June and July. Hours are limited just because we don't have all of our staff back. So we can't have as many appointments as we would like, but we'll see how that goes. I know that Irene's had some interviews with library assistants and librarians. So potentially I'll free up some opportunities there. We've also explored having scheduling done through Civic Rec. One other thing that I've figured out is that Civic Rec actually has a donations option. So what we may be able to employ is if you're registering for recreation offerings, you may be able to also do a donation to the library. So one stop shop for everything there. So hopefully that can give us a new element for donation revenue. Like you noted, Chair, I did add the tables that you requested. So that's just to help us track our, our planned donations and then miscellaneous donations. That's pretty much it. We've also adopted the budget. So we are all set for next fiscal year. That is my report and I'm available if you have any questions.
I have a question, a couple of questions. I know the city council was looking at their fee structure for all departments. And there were just two minor costs raised for the library in their packet. Is, did that pass or where are we?
Yes, that passed. Those fee changes will take effect September 1st.
So it was to reserve, a library item went from 50 cents to a dollar. And to replace lost or damaged materials went from 15 to 20 dollars. So I think those are both pretty conservative. Can you please, on the budget monitor, can you please comment on the overage and print subscriptions, Irene? Whoever, there, there's a big overage.
Oh, yes, from last year, this year, this fiscal current?
Yes, on the budget monitor.
We didn't budget enough money for our print subscriptions, but we've, we've remedied that in the new budget.
Okay. And on the donations monitor. And Robert, I really like how you've changed and added this and had kind of the revenue and the expenditures by corresponding donors. And Irene, we've, it looks to me, and if I'm reading this wrong, please correct me, but that the Chinese club has donated money that we haven't spent yet. There are donations received in Chinese language books and children's materials, but at least on this item, no corresponding expenditures.
Yes, this has been a tough year. As you know, our Chinese language materials have been purchased by a volunteer, Jenny Chu, who flies to Taiwan and purchases the books. She was not able to do that this year. So we're going to be working with her to, to try to figure out a way to get the books in the United States. And there's a company in Texas called Saifong Books that sells Asian language materials and also catalogs them. So there's a catalog record. So we're going to try to work with her since she knows our collection. She knows what our population wants. And she's, she's like a librarian. She's just really astute. So we're going to meet with her and, and start trying to collect that way.
Wonderful.
Flying to Taiwan.
All the Chinese romance novels and everything are in there?
Yeah, I think so.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Robert regarding the management analyst report? Thank you. Let's go on to old business, the Crow Public Library mission statements. We worked on a mission statement in conjunction with our work on the strategic plan, which was approved in 2016. And the plan goes to 2021. And I think last meeting, we said we were not that interested in updating the strategic plan at this time. I looked into that a little bit more and it was done in conjunction with the city plan. And so I think that as well as a new community services director are things to be considered before looking at a strategic plan update. But Mayor Udi wisely brought up, have we reviewed the mission statements? And then we got two mission statements. And so we need to revise the mission statement. And I guess, what is the protocol in the city? I know the, the board approved the strategic plan, approved the initial mission statement, but are we the actual adopters or is the city council the adopter? Do we turn a mission statement into them for approval? Is there any protocol on working this?
You know, this whole thing, I was trying to reflect back where it came from. I think it was around, you know, which entity was responsible for which programming? And I wonder if we don't just table this till we get a community services director, then with that individual, you know, work, work through this.
And so they would be the approver?
I have no idea.
Okay, okay.
No idea.
Okay. Steve, you're very well versed in mission statements. Can you comment?
Yeah, I, I think it's kind of important when, when, it's a lot of work to come up with a mission statement, but it does becomes the guiding light. I mean, people talk about vision statements and mission states and all that. Once you articulate what your mission is and what you're there to do, everything else flows from that. So crafting a, an impactful, meaningful mission statement, I think is crucial to any endeavor. And the ones I've seen, I, with no disrespect, I, I don't think, I think this sort of falls short of, of what the mission of the Crow Public Library really is. I've done, I spent a minimal amount of time just looking at other libraries' mission statements around. And there are some that I think come a lot closer to what the, the goal of a library is. So I, I, I think that crafting something is, is really important. There's a lot of good people who've already done a lot of work out there that might inform us of what we would, would, could possibly use for our situation that would be very helpful. Because a lot of mission statements written in the 50s don't apply anymore. And you also want to craft it in a way so it makes sense to people. And this isn't just a laundry list of, of items. So I'm, I'm happy to assist in that. But having done this several times before for other organizations, it's, it's kind of crucial. My question is, who are the players that would be involved in, in, in crafting this? Who would, who would, obviously Irene and the, the library staff is, is important to do that. What are the library supporters would be important in adding their input. But, you know, what city representatives, we kind of need to figure out a way to get everyone's input on this, but not, trust me, as a creative person, you don't want to have 20 people in a room trying to write one thing. And that, that'll be a nightmare. But advising on it and then having a smaller group physically go out and write it, I, I would suggest would be the way to go.
And this is a way to make, protect, protect the brand, right? And the role.
Exactly.
To the library, yeah.
Well, and, and maybe this folds into what we were talking about with the community services area also. If you clearly define what it is you're doing, now you know, oh, this is, you know, the, the mission statement for the community services department might be different. Well, is different, obviously, because there's more programs involved. But that can sort of define what the, the two entities are all about and how, what, you know, what comes from what. Defining things rather than just announcing them, you know, figuring out the why. I mean, I don't know if anyone's read Simon Sinek's book, Start With Why. If you think about what it is you're doing, you know, what's the purpose of what you're doing? Now you can figure everything else that leads to it. So I, I think that's kind of crucial. Why are we here? What is it we're doing? Why are we giving up our Monday mornings to, to support this wonderful institution? And why are all of us here to help the community in all these different venues? So I, I think that's kind of, kind of important.
Well, I think the friends are, or excuse me, the foundation, the library foundation is certainly an active group supporting the library. And it seems to me that it, like, as you said, Steve, it's kind of going to be hard to work on a mission statement, first of all, over Zoom, but also in this format of our trustee meetings. So maybe we could think about the idea of some sort of a subcommittee with trustees, perhaps a couple of members of the foundation, staff certainly. And one advantage of us working on, in, in a group on a mission statement before, I mean, a community services director comes in is allowing them to kind of jumpstart. We've had these conversations and as a community, this is what we view our mission to be and let's go. So that might be an advantage in going ahead and getting that accomplished. And we might not accomplish it, but we might be in the works of developing a mission statement because as the mayor said, they are in the throes of looking at hiring somebody in that position. So if that, you know, happens sooner, they could also assist us. If that happens later, we can give them something and hopefully they'll be raring to go. Thoughts about who else might need to be represented or would be very valuable to be represented in developing a mission statement?
I have a different thought though. I was thinking, should we use this opportunity to ask the San Marino public to submit their idea? In a way, we might get some feeling of what the community really expects our library to do. And maybe we could just, using that as a brainstorming and then the subcommittee could answer to what the public wants or need or expectation at, you know, that as a starting point. I mean, I'm not a marketing person, but I'm thinking this is another way to get more people to be involved, to participate in this public place that people will be on top of their mind when they think of getting books or getting ideas, getting whatever things that public library is one of the things that they would first think of.
I think that might be helpful in terms of the community services area as a whole. I, I think I would tend to default to the experts, the librarians, who, and get their input as to what libraries are. I mean, every time I talk to Irene and her staff, it's, it's astonishing the, the depth of the, of the experience and network they have of people who are doing like-minded things. And I think to me, the, the library staff would be the number one group I would want to have involved in this and maybe the foundation after that, but obviously city staff as well. But, but again, it kind of gets back to Liz's question, who's the D? Who decides, who ultimately gets to determine what the mission of the library is? Is that the library board of trustees? Is it the library staff? Is it someone else with the city? So we have to figure out who's going to thumbs up before we go off creating something. But I, but I think that getting the input from the people who are in the field, doing the work at the library and have studied library science is, is going to be the most valuable input of all.
So we have two things before us. One is, do we, it sounds like a subcommittee is in order, whether it's now or later. And it also, we need an answer to the question of who is the formal adopter or approver? And who do we ask that question to get the answer, Mayor Udi?
I bet you the final adopter would be the city council. Just a sec, I gotta take this call.
Please go ahead. Ken, yeah. Michael, do you have any idea of the answer to that question?
I would think ultimately it will arrive at the city council for their review and consideration and how does it integrate in with the, the rest of the, the city's overall mission, vision, goals? I, I think they would be the, ultimately the, the one there. If you're having a subcommittee, you, you may want to report not only back out to the, the whole group, but maybe when the, the mayor pops back on, see if it would be appropriate for the liaisons to sit on that or if they think you might want to go off and do your subcommittee work first. Research, you know, that as well as look at who the possible stakeholder groups that you could develop a plan to reach out to. And then from there, bring that back to the, to the, the trustees and the liaisons as appropriate. And then from there, roll up to the, up, roll up to the council.
Is there any protocol that we need to be aware of in establishing a subcommittee?
Amanda is on.
For instance.
Amanda, you were sort of speaking silently.
You're still silent.
Liz, you were good at reading Lois's lips. You can't do Amanda?
Amanda, if you can hear us, if you could just put it in the chat, maybe we can see it that way. We're gonna, we're gonna have to do an alternate form of non-verbal communication with Amanda on this. But she does have some invite insight because she does see this at other locations inside the city. I could see she is rapidly typing.
Liz, how would, how would the mission, how would the mission statement is done in the past for the library? What was that process?
Well, I came on the board in 2016 when we were working on the mission statement as part of the strategic plan. And the organization of the city services was different. And there was someone with the city who really helped us develop and write that. And we don't have that now, no more than two. Ensure it's not a Brown Act body. But if we have more trustees who would like to participate, can we do that and call special meetings of the library board?
Yes, you can certainly do that.
Okay.
So, so you may want to have your subcommittee first of no more than two board members. And then the, the question was, Mr. Mayor, if the liaisons would want to sit on this subcommittee or just wait for a report out as to what they were seeing as stakeholders that could be involved in this and some examples?
I'd be pleased to participate in the process if it would be helpful.
Thank you.
I, I think that would speed things up just, just based on what I've seen with the task force. It's just, you know, getting people's input from the, from the get-go, it seems to make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And, and the mayor runs extremely efficient meetings.
The last city council meeting was one hour and 40 minutes.
Oh, that's gotta be.
Michael does too. You run type meetings too.
There was actually, Gretchen actually didn't ask a question on two items.
Oh, Mayor. It seems to me, and, and this is not an action item, but for us to move forward with establishing a subcommittee of the library board of trustees for the purpose of reviewing and revising the mission statement to bring it back to the board for future discussion. And that we start with a subcommittee to include two members of the board, the mayor and Irene and looking at, and starting there to then develop the subcommittee, decide who are the other stakeholders to include and so forth. Looking at like Genevieve's idea of surveying and how do we include the public? Is there any discussion or am I on the right track? That is what we've decided to do?
Yes.
Yes, and I would, I would add that, you know, we don't necessarily need to have people physically, or not physically, but all meeting together, you can get input from other people without necessarily have them as part of a subcommittee. You know, just ask them, just email their thoughts or whatever their concerns are. That can be used to aggregate the information that then can be used by the smaller group to actually create the mission statement. Because otherwise you're going to get somebody saying, no, you need to say this particular word. You need to say that. But getting everybody's input is, is going to be helpful.
Okay. All right, we will get that started. Any other comments about the mission statements? Any other comments about the mission statements or the subcommittee moving forward? Let's go on to our new business and consideration of resuming in-person trustee meetings. Amanda was going to talk about this.
Can you hear me now? I think I fixed it. This is what happened when IT is working on your computer on a Friday afternoon, come back and realize it's not separate. Um, so I think you guys know, we have gone back to in-person for a few of our commissions. We started slowly with planning and DRC. Um, and we are looking at what the commissions are interested in doing, starting in July. Um, I will say things are still changing a bit. Um, the way we have it set up now is that we're asking commissions to still meet um, with the virtual option. Um, so because of our technology system, that would mean meeting in the San Marino Center for the time being, not in your normal Thornton Room. Um, that could be changing in the next few months as we get back to normal, even more so, fingers crossed. Uh, but you would look, be looking at in July, still doing it um, in the bigger room in the San Marino Center. So we could then still have a virtual option for people. So I think we're just looking for your thoughts. If you would like to do that, if you're still comfortable doing this kind of meeting, I think we're fine with that for a few more months. So we really just want the board's feedback on what, what they would like to do.
Our next meeting is not until August twenty-third.
Oh.
So we have time. Lois, what do you think about all this?
I think we should be, meet in person. I'm all for an in-person meeting.
Steve?
I can go either way.
Genevieve?
I'm okay either way.
I'd like to see us go in person if it's at all possible, but we'll follow the lead and direction of the city. And um, you know, but I, I'd really love for us to be back in person, even if it's at the San Marino Center or the bathroom.
Very great. I think I forgot that since you're dark in July, that does give a little more time to have us work the kinks out. Um, if anyone's joined a city council meeting, there's quite a bit of a process to do a joint meeting. It's definitely always much easier if you're doing all virtual or not. But we have a system that we've worked out. It's just making sure staff for each um, board or commission is trained and ready to do that. Um, but with that said, by the end of summer, we might be getting ready to go back to the bathroom and council chambers. So um, I'm sure staff can keep you posted and we could check in as it gets a little closer to the next meeting. Um, but I think that's helpful feedback that everyone's ready and willing to go back in person.
Amanda, could we do just in-person and not a hybrid option?
I think where we're at now is that we're still asking, just because of health orders and best practices, to still give that option for people, um, for transparency sake. Um, to have that option, but that's where we are now. As you've seen the last fifteen months, things are changing quickly. Um, we, we might be changing that by the time you guys meet again. But as of now, we're asking so to have that option.
Thank you. Any more input on our meetings? Thank you. Um, Irene, do we have any more public comments?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. We're going to adjourn our meeting at eight fifty-four. And we'll meet again August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at eight AM. And be watching your email because that's how we'll find out whether we'll be meeting in person, getting up a little bit earlier. Or zooming. Thank you all so much. And staff, thank you for everything you're doing. Michael, especially thank you to all your departments for the Fourth of July. We are adjourned.